And Justice Perot.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes?
We have just reordered a couple of things, but other than that, it's the same agenda items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I will second your motion.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Chad. Any questions or discussions? All in favor of approving the agenda, raise your right hand. Motion carries for zero. Next on our agenda is item four, reports. Dr. Parker.
Yeah, thank you. We, as we start every report in our board meetings, we have good news coming from our Director of Community Relations, Maria Bond.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. We definitely have some great news going on in the district. First of all, approximately thirty vested community members and some with and without children in the district became the first cohort of the Mount Vernon ambassadors and kicked off their first meeting in August by getting to know each other, listening to a presentation by Superintendent Dr. Parker, as well as ending the meeting with a tour of our bus barn where they learned about facts from our, about our transportation department. Also, last year, several Mount Vernon high school students competed in round one and round two of the Amazon in yellow feral code competition called Your Voice is Power. The following winners will now compete for the grand prize, which is a $5,000 scholarship or grant to start their own business. So congratulations to round two semifinalists Ella Burt, Ethan Shem-Said, Luke Heiner, Sophia DeWale, and William Batista. And round one semifinalist is James Dimmer-Filo Blue. My apologies there. Okay, Mount Vernon held three sixty-five-plus registration events this summer for those sixty-five-plus who live in our district to receive an event pass for most Mount Vernon High School and middle school events. Attendees enjoy refreshments and getting to know Superintendent Dr. Parker during these events. Recently, the Mount Vernon High School Booster Glass was a success with many community members' families coming out to enjoy the day with inflatables, games, silent auction, live music, reinforcing the camaraderie in the Mount Vernon community. Under community connections, I wanted to share that the Mount Vernon Community School Corporation hosted the Greenfield Chamber of Commerce with Governor Holcomb as the speaker. And then also Hancock Health CEO Steve Long was moderator of that wonderful lunch. A company called Wilbur Medical Supply in North Carolina donated many medical supplies that will be used for our health science program at Mount Vernon High School, where students can earn their certified nursing assistant certification, as well as another certification this year. Also wanted to share lastly that Mount Vernon High School Small Smiles Club, withheld a Shelby Foundation for Kindness delivered, provided box lunches and Amazon gift cards to all of our high school teachers on Friday. So special thanks to the high school students, Mrs. Reeser and Mrs. Addison, who helped with this initiative. And there's additional good news in your board packets.
Thank you, Maria. Item four point two on our agenda is the curriculum and digital learning pathway. Mr. Shipley?
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for inviting me here today. As you know, we usually have a report at our board meetings, spotlights on schools, and I'm delighted that we're switching a little bit to more of a spotlight on programs. And I'm excited about the opportunity to share an update on our curriculum and spotlight what we've been doing here recently with our curriculum, because we have had curriculum teams do a great deal of work. Oops, did it didn't work. Just a little. Okay. First of all, as you know, in spring, we added to our curriculum team, and I'm very appreciative of the board allowing us to add an assistant director and nine specialists in these four buildings, because these staff members are doing a lot of work with our students who have, whose rate of learning has been affected by COVID, and they have a lot of plans developed this summer and are ready this fall to help those students this school year. And additionally, as you'll learn a little bit later on tonight, they'll also work to support some of our corner team students. So we're very thankful for the board approving these additional staff members to help our team in the development of our team and our curriculum. When we talk about curriculum, what we've been working on the last couple of years is to create a crystal clear curriculum that is very kind, because we know the name around says that clear is kind and unclear is unkind. So we're trying to make our curriculum as clear as we possibly can, so everybody is, knows exactly what we want students to learn, and we're able to identify students that have attained it, and who have attained it very quickly, and who have yet to attain it. When we talk about our crystal clear curriculum, we talk about a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Guaranteed simply means that every student has the opportunity to learn what we have determined to be essential for the students to learn regardless of if they go to Fort Worth Elementary, or Corstha Elementary, or Montfort Elementary, if they're in third grade, it's guaranteed they're getting the same content. Same as in middle school, depending on which, doesn't matter which team they're on, it's guaranteed curriculum because if they're on Team All-Stars in eighth grade, or Team Eagles in eighth grade, they're getting the guaranteed curriculum that we determined is essential for them to get. Same for high school. We have multiple teachers teaching English nine, English ten, algebra one. It's a guaranteed curriculum. It's the same regardless of who the teacher is. Also talking about viable, that it's time to learn, that it's manageable, that students can learn the content that is deemed essential for our students, and they can learn it in the time that is provided in the school year. This slide here tells us what research shares, and that is that we've never met a standard that we didn't like. If we're going to teach every single standard and benchmark that are in our schools that we need to keep students in schools for twenty-three years, get the grades K to twenty-two. We know that's not possible. That's not what we're going to do. We don't want to get them for thirteen years, K to twelve. Therefore, we have to be very intentional about what we're doing with our curriculum, and that's what we're trying to do with a crystal clear guaranteed viable curriculum. So in order to create that crystal clear guaranteed and viable curriculum, we've called our curriculum our essential learnings. And you can see here a picture of teachers. Over the last couple of years, we've had curriculum collaborators, that's content area specialists, that get together and discuss our curriculum and determine what is essential and what our essential learnings are. We've shortened that and called those simply our ELs. These are created by teachers, and they specifically articulate the content and skills that we want students, all students, to obtain during the school year or during the course. Our ELs promote clarity, they promote consistency in priorities for student learning, they help create pacing, and they create ownership of the curriculum, because the teachers are the ones that make these decisions, and they're small class of groups like you see here in this picture. So you might be asking yourself, well, if there's no standards for twenty-three years, how do we determine what's essential? How do our teachers determine what is an essential learning for their course or grade level or content area? And we look at five, five things in order to determine which standards we determine to be ELs, we put into ELs. And when we put these into ELs, we, we tell our teachers all the time, these are living, breathing documents. We revisit these throughout the school year. We pull teachers in small groups out. Our curriculum collaborators will look at their essential learnings, look at their assessments. But we determine which ones are assessments based, which ones are our essential learnings based upon standards that have endurance, that have leverage, that have readiness, that have teacher judgment, because these are our teachers, are our content experts. And then also assessments. Are they something that students need to learn to do well on standardized assessments like IRE, ILEARN, ATE, SAT, those types of assessments? So those are five areas. They look at all the standards that the state gives us, and we try to pare them down to some, to standards that are essential, that we call essential learnings, that are guaranteed. So whether you're not, you're in third grade at Fort Worth or a third grade at Montfort, you're getting the same curriculum, different teachers, so there's some differences, but the same curriculum is guaranteed, and it's viable, that you can get it done during a hundred-and-eighty school day, school year. Another thing we've done is we've moved to help create that clarity by creating quarter views. We don't have very specific week-by-week, day-by-day pacing guidance. We otherwise call them quarter views by what is essential for students to learn during each quarter of that grade or content level. And you can see here on the left, that is an example of a kindergarten quarter view for math. You see the items there are listed in quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, and quarter four is cut off at the bottom of the page. But you can see there's the different essential learnings that they've identified that our students are learning during each of those quarters in kindergarten math. So why do we want those? Well, it creates clarity. It makes an overview of the essential learnings that are taught and assessed during each one of our quarters. Our PLC teams then look at that assessment data to determine which students have learned the material, which students have not learned the material, and then what are we going to do about it to help them learn that material? Secondly, that provides clarity. The intent, it helps us know that our intended curriculum is also what is implemented. Provides a crosswalk between essential learnings and our district resources. As you know, we purchase district resources for students to use in the classroom, and our essential learnings are our curriculum. We use state standards, and we use resources to help our teachers teach our curriculum, which is our essential learnings. And the last thing is creates communication with our stakeholders. And that's one thing that I'm excited to share tonight, is we want to provide that clarity, but not only the clarity for our teachers and our students, but clarity for our parents and our stakeholders and community members. So you might be thinking, well, where can we see these ELs that he's talking about? And this, please note that this is a work in progress. It's not a hundred percent, but I am very thankful that we had July twenty-seventh, that Tuesday before school started, we had a performance qualified school day where we earned a, we were able to, and the board allowed us to adjust our school year, so we could have another day of teachers working together. And that's one of the products of that day of our curriculum teams working together, is to create these quarter views to provide that clarity for our parents and our stakeholders. So if you go to the curriculum websites, or if you go to one individual school websites, and there is an arrow. Am I, oh yeah, it is. There's my arrow. It's kind of going up there, but anyway. And the first dropdown is the academic excellence, and then it takes you to a curriculum grading scale, and then there's a table of courses and content by grade level. You'll see that on this next slide. There it comes. When you go to that, again, you go to the district website or the school website, you click on academic excellence, and then go to curriculum and then grading scale, and then there's that table of courses and content. You can see a hyperlink for each one of those. You click on that hyperlink, and it brings up the quarter view so that your parents and everybody can see exactly what their child is learning there in each of the quarters of their grade level or content area. And again, this is a work in progress. This is not a hundred percent done. It's still in the process of adding those on there. And here's two more examples of what you will see when you click on those links. The first one on the left is a chemistry essential learnings quarter view. And you can see there's one, two, three, four boxes of four essential learnings that are determined by our chemistry curriculum teams and what is being taught during the first quarter. Excuse me. And then you'll see on the right, there's a fifth grade reading essential learning quarter view, and you can see quarter one and part of quarter two, what our students are learning. So these are our essential learnings. They're on the district websites. We're excited about finally having those ready, but it was essential to have that day on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, the performance qualified day for our teacher teams to get these prepared, so we could share them with our public. So we're very thankful to have that day and that time for teachers to work really hard and prepare this information so we could share it. That's my overview on our curriculum. I'm going to change gears here. I'd really like to talk about our digital learning pathway. The digital learning pathways is a program that we started a couple of years ago, and we're very proud of this pathway. And we've talked in the spring, and we wanted to do a presentation last June, and it got pushed off because we wanted to be in session, because we were hoping to get a lot of our teachers here to celebrate, and share with them that they were a part of our cohort number one of our digital learning pathway. Back in the fall of two thousand and nineteen, we decided, we've been a one-to-one school since two thousand and fifteen, and we decided, we wanted to evaluate ourselves and see where we were with digital learning, e-learning days, blended learning, using LMSs, using technology in the classroom, and evaluate where we were, because we started, as you know, in two thousand and fifteen with one-to-one, and we just kind of jumped into it with both feet. And so we started that fall, and we put together a digital learning committee, and we started meeting. We had, I don't know, six or seven, eight meetings during the school year, and we started meeting in the fall, and we basically evaluated where we currently were in the fall of two thousand and nineteen about digital learning, e-learning days, and using one-to-one technology with our teachers. And then in the spring of two thousand and twenty, we got hit with COVID, and our committee continued to meet through Zoom, and we were home that fourth quarter, and we had a couple of meetings. We had some, some best practices with one of our partner curriculum, digital learning companies that we work with. We also provided eight to ten hours with all of our teachers to participate in best practices and professional developments during the pandemic when they're home on Zoom over digital learning. And we wanted to take what we learned in the fall with our committee and transfer that to that little spring, that month of May, we had eight to ten hours of professional development to, you know, what did we learn during the first two months of the pandemic when we were all at home? And we really got to dive into that. Then we come into the fall of two thousand and twenty, and the Department of Education released digital learning capacity building grants. And we clearly decided to apply to get this grant to help fast forward and move everything that we learned from the, the fourth quarter of the pandemic and develop and move that forward. And that's what this digital learning pathway is. It's what we did with the grant that we learned, we got from the Department of Education, a digital learning capacity building grant. It's to build capacity, capacity in all of our teachers. And you have to have an outside group work with you as part of the grant. And we were very fortunate that we got into communications with CIESC, Central Indiana Education Service Center, and got a great partner, partner with Lena Darnay. And she really worked in unison with Misty Hall, whom I'm going to introduce in just a second. And Misty was our facilitator of our digital learning pathway. We met with cohort one, with about twenty-one educators, mostly teachers, some administrators, and we met this past spring and had some, some really good depth, in-depth conversations about best practice, practices in digital learning, e-learning, and virtual learning. And Misty's going to talk more, so I'm not going to steal all of the thunder, but the work that Misty did was phenomenal. We really were able to take an idea that the state of Indiana gave a grant out for and make it specifically Mount Vernon. It wasn't a cookie cutter kind of program, but it was something that, with Misty's hard work and Lena's hard work, we were able to have a great product for our teachers. And the grant allowed us to pay our teachers for some of the time that they spent outside of the school day. This past spring, in the probably the hardest year of their P P career, and the fact that they were able to do that was phenomenal. So I'm very, very proud of Misty and all of the members of the first cohort. And I'm going to stop talking because I'm probably taking some of Misty's thunder. So Misty Hall is our curriculum integration coordinator, and I'm a lover to share about our digital learning pathway.
Thank you. I wanted to start by thanking you so much for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. It's quite an honor to share with you all of the hard work that has gone into this. And while I appreciate what Mr. Shipley said about the work that I have done, I really wanted to just begin by just saying the real, the real kudos goes out to the teachers and the administrators who went through this pathway and helped in the first cohort. And they helped to refine it. They gave us lots of feedback. And so we know that they took their time, very precious time, in a year where they were teaching in person and virtually, and yet they still dedicated a lot of hours to help move us along in the digital, in the digital learning arena. So they're the real, the real rock stars here. So let's talk a little bit about what is the digital learning pathway. And as Mr. Shipley said, it was born from a lot of ideas. When we started with the, with the digital learning committee, we started asking questions like, what, what does our digital learning look like here at Mount Vernon? What do we want it to look like? What do we want it to look like one year from now, five years from now, ten years from now? And then some of my favorite questions was that we even asked, what do, what do we want for our children? Not, not just our students, but if this was my personal child or my personal grandchildren who was coming in, who were students at Mount Vernon, what do I want them to look, what do I want digital learning to look like for them? And so at the heart of this was that focus, was the students. And then the other piece of it was the work learning. So if you look at the words, digital learning pathway, what we've done in this pathway is we've tried to create something that is not about just digital learning, although it is called the digital learning pathway, but really focusing on learning and what is best practices for all students, whether they are in the classroom or in a blended environment, or if they are in a full remote setting. So that, from that, this digital learning pathway was born. As Mr. Shipley said, this was created by Mount Vernon teachers, and it was created for Mount Vernon teachers. I was, it was such a blessing to be able to work through this process, because each step of the way, we were able to work with some of our own district experts to come in, and I'll speak a little bit about them as we go through, and give us some of their insights. Because what was very important to us along the way was that we weren't disjointed, but we had a continuity between what was happening in Mount Vernon every day in the classroom to the digital learning space. So what we did was we just tried to translate as much as possible good teaching and learning practices into the digital and blended environment. So a little bit of an overview, as he said, it was funded by the DOE through the digital building, capacity building grant. We did work in collaboration with CIESC for creation and implementation of this, and they were just absolutely amazing. These teachers, as I said, they put their hours in, and they were able to receive some compensation, but I'm going to say not even close to the compensation that they deserved for this. They spent six hours, two, three-hour session, or excuse me, three, two-hour sessions of synchronous learning utilizing Zoom meetings on, you know, after they taught a long day and everything, and they still spent another two hours in the evenings with us. And then in addition to that, they spent multiple hours on their own pace going through the modules of their own self-paced learning in our campus learning management system. And they did a lot of collaboration amongst one another and gave us a lot of feedback. And I think it was a pretty rewarding experience for them. We also wanted to make sure, as we said, that it was for the teachers and by the teachers. So we had a lot of things embedded throughout every common module. First of all, we had teacher spotlights, one of my favorite parts, because we were able to have teachers from all around the district share with us as we went to each module and tell us a little bit about ways that they were accomplishing this in their classroom. So whenever the teachers went through this program, they were able to see some of their peers right there giving examples, and not just something from a textbook or some, some expert from CIESC, but their peers who are the real experts in the field. They were also giving us module feedback, because as we know, learning is a process and not a product. And we wanted to make sure that as they went through here, that, that we had, make sure that we had all of the feedback we could, so that we could keep the learning going, so that it didn't just stop with this one iteration, but that we could keep the, the learning going. They had collaboration for common outcomes. They gave us examples and non-examples of what it looks like to them. So they were defining along the way what this looks like for Mount Vernon. We weren't defining, and they were. They were also had the opportunity to do some down the rabbit hole, another fun activity, where they were able to go ahead and if something really catches their eye, it would kind of like their own enrichment. So we were trying to treat this very much the way we would treat the, the classroom. And then we had self-assessment, and we had proficiency scales, so that they could be constantly looking at how they were doing on this. So that brings us to the actual modules. Our first module was on relationships and foundations, because just like in the regular classroom, it was imperative to us to have the relationships and foundations first and talk about how can we, how can we translate the norms, the procedures, the, all of that that we do in our regular classrooms into the digital space, so that students can be successful. And we were blessed to have Amy Tucker, our behavior specialist, collaborate with us. So we had her as an expert to give us more information. And you can see the outcomes and the objectives that we have up there on the screen. I'm not going to read them all to you. Our next module was designed around accessible learning in the digital learning space, because we wanted to make sure that we, every child had the opportunity to learn, and that technology was not going to be a barrier for them in any way. So we were, it was imperative for us to be able to make sure that teachers were, felt comfortable with accessible learning. And Drew Slence, who unfortunately is no longer with us at Mount Vernon, but he was key as an assistive technology expert in helping us to understand and to share different tools that we have here at Mount Vernon. And although he's gone from us, his, his expertise will live on in this digital learning pathway. I promise you that. We looked at universal design properties, because we wanted to make sure that we just realized that no matter what a student comes to, where they come to us, that we can meet them where they are and take them further down the road in learning. Our third module was learner-centered design, and in that module, we focused mostly this time on the campus learning management system. And our team here, they were instrumental in helping us to come up with a template that would go, that was common across the district. And so that was again, part of that clarity piece that we're very thankful for. The fourth one was engagement and empowerment. And if you know, Mount Vernon's three E's of educate and engage and empower, this was just tied beautifully with that. And we were able to look at the new art and science of teaching handbook to facilitate some goal-oriented instruction. And the teachers were able to take different engagement activities, look at them, and think about how can, what would it look like in the digital space as well as the physical space? And they were able to collaborate and discuss and have lots of rich discussions. And I think that if I were talking about the, reading the feedback from the group, this was probably one of their favorite ones. And of course, feedback and assessment is always key. And so we made sure that we were talking about feedback and assessment in the digital space, again, from the new science of teaching and ways that we can give feedback to our kids, so that when, if they're not with us in person, that they're not missing that essential feedback or that formative instruction, or, or formative assessments, or summative assessments. So we talked a lot about the different strategies that we could use, ways that we could do this. And all along the way, we tried to be very focused on the, the content and not the tool. So we kept in mind, learning first and the technology second. We didn't, we didn't want the tool to be our driver here, but we wanted what was best practices for kids. And then we finally, we just wrapped it up with a future-ready mindset, because as we know, things are always changing. And so we just made sure that we were always looking forward. So that was what we did with our first cohort, and which leads us to what we're going to do next. And we are blessed to say that we are going to have some future cohorts. We have cohort two, we'll be able to start here this fall. And it'll be about forty-two teachers and some remaining administrators. Then we'll kick off a third cohort with about eighty-four teachers. And then the final cohort will be in, and other teachers will have the opportunity to join us. We have set aside some grant dollars to pay teachers their extra contracted hours for the many hours that they do put in outside of the, the regular teacher day for this pathway. And that leads us to the people who, like I said, in my mind, we're the real rock stars in this, and that's the people that really spent their time giving their hours and trying these things out with the kids and, and giving us the feedback, so that we were not just living in the theory world, but we're, we're actually in practical. And so I'm just going to call it the pioneers in our field here. And this is our cohort one. And Mr. Shipley, would you come and present?
So we have a few participants here with us. Mr. Casey Dodd, would you come up here, please? Mr. Ryan Kane. Mr. Martin Escas. Mrs. Allison Zelinski. And Mr. Greg Romo. But thank you very much. We appreciate you letting us share a little bit about our curriculum instruction and our digital learning pathway. We're very proud of the digital learning pathway and what we're able to create, as Missy said, by our teachers for us. So thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On your, in the curriculum, when you talk about your ELs, at the end of the year, I'm sure you do, you come back and look at those and change them as you need to and adjust and with teacher input. Okay, and then...
Living, breathing, dot.
Yes, yes, good.
They're wonderful. We put them in front of students, and we may decide we want to change them.
Right. Some things work and some things don't. I get that. For the cohorts that you use in the digital piece, are those the same people every time? Are you building?
No, we will build with the goal of getting all of our teachers the opportunity to go through the digital learning pathway.
Awesome. Good. All right, thanks.
And the teachers were selected by, you know, we started with people on our digital learning committee the first year, and by then we participate in cohort one, extended it to a few more people. And you can see this group is small, about 20, 21 people. And then the fall, this next group will be a little bit big, twice as big. The next group will be twice as big to try to get through everybody. And we've allocated the digital learning capacity billion, grand dollars to help with some of those evening times that we're taking from them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Misty, too. Oops, I'm on the wrong screen. Next on our agenda is item 4.3, the Health and Safety Plan. Mr. Smedley.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to provide the board an update from the last report of our Health and Safety Plan, as well as present some additional information, including how we're supporting students who are out of school due to quarantine or other prolonged absences. So begin, let's kind of pick up where we left off. Here are the updated numbers since I last shared them with you. Again, the top set of numbers, just to build some context around this year's numbers, were last year's totals. So if you look at the number of positive cases we had the entire year last year, we had 304. Of those 304 positive cases, we ended up with, we ended up with 1,775 close contacts, leaving us with a ratio of about six close contacts to every one positive case. The updated numbers for this year through last Friday, we had 19 positive cases. Of those positive cases, we had 437 close contacts. But of those 437 close contacts, 63 were not required to quarantine because they were fully vaccinated. That made our overall COVID positive to close contact ratio one to 20 in those 19 cases. Then we broke it out by building. Of those 19 cases, as of Friday, we had zero reported cases at both Mount Comfort Elementary as well as Fortville Elementary. We had two reported cases at McCordville Elementary. But of those two, we only had one close contact. So as you can see, the close contact ratio there is under one for that one positive case. At the middle school through Friday, we had 12 positive cases, of which the COVID positive, close contact ratio was one to 23 students or staff members. Then at the high school, again, through Friday, we had three positive cases. The COVID positive and close contact ratio was one to 22. And then we had two other positive cases throughout the district. And again, that was a ratio, or that netted a ratio of one to just a half because we had very few close contacts to those two other cases. Just as a reminder, again, some legal guidance related to COVID in schools for this current year. School boards now have the jurisdiction to implement routine preventative measures they deem necessary to protect the health of their students and staff, such as masking, distancing, and disinfection. There are two mandates that are currently in place related to COVID-19 that we are obligated to follow. The one is a U.S. Department of Transportation mandate that requires masks being worn on buses at all times. The other is related to contact tracing and quarantine. This is in connection with the governor's latest executive order 21-19 that he issued on July 29th, which supports the Department of Health's guidance on COVID-19 that was issued on July 9th, 2021. That guidance basically says that schools are obligated to report COVID cases and conduct contact tracing. And if they can do so, it's a class B misdemeanor according to the Indiana Communicable Disease Statute, Indiana Code 16-41-2. Again, the guiding principles that we use to develop our health and safety protocols as well as the revisions, I remember these last time, so just to paraphrase these, again, we're going to adhere to the state and the laws regarding health and safety related to COVID-19. We're certainly going to work with the local and state health departments as well as for that guidance. Our goal is to prevent as many students and staff from missing school due to illness, including COVID-19. And if they do have to miss, we want to bring them back as quickly as we possibly can and as safely as we possibly can. And then again, we want to maintain a safe and healthy learning environment for our students, staff, and community members who use our campuses throughout the year. So looking at the updates to the health and safety protocol that's already in place that the board approved in July, a couple of things we'll point out in that first box there. This is related to each specific building. So the data that impacts where we land on these tiers is related specifically to that building's data. Once these schools advance to a higher level, then they will remain in that level for an minimum of five school days within this proposal. And then as you go down through the different levels, from green to blue, it starts to then specify what those numbers are based on per COVID positive rates. As you can see, at the green level, zero to one for elementary, zero to two for middle school, zero to four for high school. And then as you can work down through this plan, that those numbers begin to increase. Once you get to level orange, this is the point, or this is the level where we would require masks. And again, those numbers are specified there in this proposal. At the elementary level, it would be seven students or staff members who identify COVID positive at the same time. Middle school, it would be 11 students and staff. The high school, it would be 14 students and staff who are COVID positive. And again, just as a important reminder, once masks are on, the close contacts move from six feet to three feet according to the Indiana State Department of Health. So let's take a look at last year's numbers and apply it to this proposal. So looking at last year's numbers, again, these are the total numbers by building last year. At Fortville, you can see we had 43 students and staff who were COVID positive, 23 at Mount Comfort Elementary, 35 at McCordville Elementary, 52 at Mount Vernon Middle School, 123 at the high school, and then 28 are other. And those other are more related to district-level employees that are not designated to a particular building. So here's an example of how the rolling 10-day COVID positive counter work. So here in this example, we have three cases of COVID in one building. So that first line represents our first case. So there, you can tell between days one through three, we have one positive case in the building. Then on day four, we have a second positive case. So that's when that second operating tool would begin. And in that example, then you'd have two positive cases within the same building. But then by day eight, there's a third case of COVID within that building to a third student or staff member. And then for that three-day period, you would have three positive cases within one building. And then as that first case drops off, the number drops to two. And then when the second case drops off, the number drops to one. If that makes sense? So let's take a look at, again, how this looked last year if we applied this year's numbers. So that red line represents that orange trigger point, or that trigger point at that orange level for the masks to be required within each building. So as you can see, at Fortville throughout the year, we never quite hit that threshold. We were close two different times, but we never really quite hit that threshold. At McCordville, the same thing. We barely, you know, stayed under that seven positive number in each, or in that particular building on two different occasions. But again, as you can see, we were well under that threshold for the rest of the year. And the same can be said at Mount Comfort, that their number never exceeded six cases at one time at Mount Comfort. However, as you get to the middle school, you can see this line graph demonstrates that, again, at 11 positive cases, there was a 10-day period where they did reach that trigger point at level orange. And then at the high school, there are three different occasions throughout the year, late October, early November, and December, and then once again in January. The timeframe for each one of those periods was a seven-day period, an 11-day period, and another seven-day period. Going back and looking at the middle school, if I can, just real quick, I think the middle school example showed a 10-day period where it would be at level orange according to, again, this year's proposal. Does that all make sense? Okay. I do want to provide a couple of significant changes from the Indiana Department of Health since we last met. But again, this is an ever-changing situation. According to the Department of Health, students who are now three to six feet from an identified positive case, we do not have to go into them provided that the positive case and the close contact is wearing a mask. The other significant change, and this is a biggie, contact tracing on the bus is now three feet because everyone on the bus is wearing a mask. The old standard was six feet. So obviously, cutting that in half greatly impacts the number of students that we have to quarantine in a good way, so it would lower that number. So let's get into how we are going to support students who are out of quarantine or for prolonged periods of time due to illness. So again, I'd like to thank the administrators of the major building as well as the lead teachers who helped formulate these plans. In all sincerity, these plans really describe what many teachers were already doing, even dating back to our first quarantine case. But just to highlight some of these approaches that were actually shared last Friday on Parents' Square to all parents, assignments and materials will be provided no later than 48 hours after teachers are notified of close contacts. And I can tell you right now, those assignments are being pushed out much sooner than that. But again, because information comes in at sometimes really strange hours, a lot of times over the weekends, we just ask that, again, you give teachers time to collect those materials and get those ready to be pushed out to students. In most cases, assignments will be given for the duration of the quarantine period or at least a week's worth at a time. Assignments and materials will be pushed out electronically, in most cases through their learning management system, whether it be Canvas or Google Meet. However, if there are printed materials or supplies that need to be picked up, they can certainly arrange that with each school's front office to do so. Both direct and indirect instruction will be provided. Examples of direct instruction would be from the classroom teachers, the learning specialists, and/or other support staff. Indirect examples of instruction would include links to videos, recordings, and other instructional resources. To continue, instruction and check-ins will be conducted by teachers, specialists, and other support staff. Assistance and follow-up will be provided by classroom teachers, specialists, counselors, administrators, and other support staff members. It's basically all hands on deck at that point. In most cases, time will be provided as to when assistance will be available for those students. We're also asking that students and parents are encouraged to reach out to ask questions, seek further guidance and assistance when needed as well. And also, we just ask that students and parents allow teachers enough, and any of the support staff, enough time to get back with them as, again, right now, we have a very high demand of need. We're also making sure that our special education teachers are coordinating with their students and families to provide adequate support based on the needs of each student's IEP. Students will also be encouraged to complete their assignments while out there to stay on pace with their class. Due dates for assignments may be extended, however, if a student is sick or needs additional help before completing the assignment within a reasonable amount of time. And tests and quizzes may be given electronically or delayed until a student returns to school. This will be up to each teacher's discretion. Students will not be expected, or should not be expected, to take assignments until the teacher feels the student is prepared for that assessment, again, within a reasonable amount of time. Here is, sorry, here are a couple of examples of what some lessons have looked like that have been pushed out to students who are on quarantine. Both of these examples were provided by the middle school. And I elected to choose these two samples because as you can see, there's examples of that indirect instruction being provided there in those links from the teacher. So again, the two examples I provided, one came on Thursday, August 5th. Again, here's a sample of those core subject areas at the middle school that provide that support for those students who are out of quarantine. And then the other examples, as you can see, from Tuesday, August 10th, same thing. It's a different, it's a different team at the middle school, but again, very common approach, this very standardized approach. Again, as you can see, there are links within that as well to provide that indirect instruction. So if I may, we have Amy, who has our school attorney here this evening. And if I may, I'd like to ask permission to ask Amy some questions that we've been fielding, that we feel like are either essential questions or common questions related to what we've been dealing with here since she came back to school. And if I can, I'll probably lump the first three questions together because they're kind of related to one another.
Certainly.
So if you don't mind me reading these out loud. Where is it stated that it is a legal requirement to report COVID positive, conduct close contact investigations into quarantine? Why must students and staff who are returning early from quarantine wear a mask from day 14? And why is a vaccinated individual able to return to school earlier than an unvaccinated individual?
Those are indeed related as a legal matter because they all come from Indiana Department of Health control measures for COVID-19, which are requirements that the Indiana Department of Health does have the authority to issue under state law. And that state law is Indiana Code 16-41-2, as you alluded to in your report earlier. These control measures are independent of the executive order. There was a mention also of the governor's executive order 21-19, which mentions these control measures. But even if and when the governor's executive order should expire, those control measures that the Indiana Department of Health has issued can continue and will continue unless and until the Department of Health rescinds or replaces them under that statute.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next question, how can it be a misdemeanor to not follow this? And are school personnel liable?
That very same statute that was mentioned, that is the Indiana Communicable Disease Statute, which I should also mention, that law is independent from any disaster declaration or any emergency orders. It is always in effect, and the Indiana Department of Health always has the ability to issue control measures for any type of communicable disease. So that aspect is not specific to COVID or specific to a pandemic. But this statute at Indiana Code 16-41-2-9 does establish that it's a class B misdemeanor to recklessly violate or fail to comply with the chapter. And that is the chapter that does refer to the control measures and the ability of the Department of Health to issue those control measures. Under that same statute, each day a violation continues is a separate offense and a separate misdemeanor. Since the control measures for COVID-19 that are in place right now do specifically put requirements on schools, school officials whose actions cause a failure to comply could be liable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next question, what gives schools the legal authority to issue or not issue mask requirements?
That is also Indiana statute, but it is multiple and a variety of Indiana statutes. but it is multiple and a variety of Indiana statutes that provide or grant the schools that authority. And recent case law on similar pandemic-related issues in the past few months have also supported that statutory authority.
Okay, very good. And the last question, why do we have to wear a mask while on the bus?
Well, if folks were listening to your report earlier, there was a nugget about that as well, that this is a requirement of the federal control, or CDC, Centers for Disease Control. Lots of "control" in these words today. Centers for Disease Control order in effect. But an additional clarification that wasn't mentioned in your report is that that is enforced by the U.S. Department of Transportation, specifically the TSA. And this is all under Federal Transportation Authority and federal statutes that are similar to the Department of Health statute at the state level. These are federal statutes for transportation authority, where that came from. And that's why you see a federal mask mandate that just applies to school buses.
Okay, very good. Again, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
As I mentioned the last time I provided the board a report on our health and safety plan, we are responding to a situation that remains very fluid and causes us to make changes into our protocols and procedures from time to time. We will continue to rely on the guiding principles as we navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure the health and safety of our students, staff, families, and community members that utilize our facilities. Any questions?
Chris, is most of the quarantine coming from the bus?
I would say about half right now.
So that three feet is going to help?
It's going to help tremendously, yeah, we think so.
Does that go into effect immediately so we can start bringing students back?
Dr. Parker, can you help with this one? I'm not sure where we are in that process. I do know, and I will add this, and I forgot to add this earlier. If I go back to the very first slide that showed all of the updates to the data, I got a little ahead of myself. Our health service team and building administrator right now are working through several cases that have come in over the weekend and this morning. When I say several, we're somewhere between 12 and 14 additional cases on top of the 19 that I reported as of Friday. So to answer that question, those students for sure would be, that newer rule for the buses would be implemented without a doubt. The absolute numbers, like I said, are now over 30. I don't have the updated quarantine numbers yet because it's still so-so new. But yeah, to answer your question, yes, that three-foot rule of the bus would be implemented at least on these most current cases, for sure.
Yeah, I was just going to share that we were very happy that just yesterday, Sunday, we received from the local county health department and the state health department the first time to have permission to apply that to the bus. So we're very excited about that, and we'll be moving that forward as quickly as possible.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, item five on our agenda is public comments regarding agenda items. For those of you who have not signed up to speak at a board meeting, I want to share some information regarding the procedures for speaking. As a reminder, our school board meeting is a meeting held in public. It's not a public meeting. And the difference there is that a meeting held in public, your opportunity to share, and we listen, there is no engagement. In a public meeting, it is you're sharing your information, and you're asking questions, and there's a back and forth. So that's the difference there. Our policy for speaking at a meeting can be found on our website. Anyone wishing to speak about an item already on the agenda can come to a meeting, and you must sign in, and you can speak on an item that is on the agenda. If you want to speak to us about something not on the agenda, then we ask that you give us seven days' notice so we can get that on the agenda. Those speaking today will have three minutes to speak. And if you've been here before, you'll know at the last two board meetings, we've been pretty liberal with the three minutes. However, we are going to enforce the three minutes today. I know when you're in front of people, it's kind of hard to know where you are. You think three minutes is a long time, but it goes really fast. So we'll have a timer projected up there so you can see where you are as you're speaking. And when you get to that three minutes, I will ask you to finish and end so that we can allow everybody who's signed up to speak to have their opportunity. I hope that you'll all help me out with that. And I also would ask that everyone help us out. I don't see this happening, but refrain from talking over someone or yelling out. Everybody's been so respectful, and we appreciate that at our last couple of meetings. And I hope we can continue that here this evening. So with that being said, our first person to speak is Janet Smith.
Thank you. The microphone working this time?
It is.
My name is Janet Smith, 1200 San Francisco, Greenfield. As you may know, the presentation that Dr. Stock gave at the emergency meeting has gone viral with over 10 million views from social media. He has been overwhelmed with supportive calls from around the country, from Alaska and Hawaii to Puerto Rico and all places in between. How do I know this? Since I invited him to speak, I felt responsible to help him with this overwhelming task of these messages. These calls have come from doctors, former president of the State Medical Association, nurses, school board members, school board superintendents, state senators, and Indiana state representatives, as well as many concerned parents. Most were anxious to get copies of Dr. Stock's research that he presented to you all. Out of the hundreds of messages I listened to last week, only four were negative. Everyone was profusely thanking him for being willing to say publicly what they knew was the truth. Many are upset that their children are required to wear masks or that their teenagers are required to get the vaccine to attend college. Last week, I watched a video interview with Dr. Robert Malone, the inventor of mRNA technology, which is the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. His interview supported everything Dr. Stock said, and he stated that the vaccine should not be given to anyone under age 30. He further stated that Pfizer did not follow any of the rules for getting the vaccine approved, and FDA, with a wink and a nod, gave an emergency approval. Also, he recently has suggested that they stop the vaccine altogether. Dr. Jansey Lindsay, a PhD in biochemistry and molecular biology, has over 30 years of experience, closed her testimony to the CDC by saying, "We must halt off COVID vaccine administration immediately before we create a true pandemic that we cannot bring in." I looked at the VAERS database, and it says 12,000 people have died from the vaccine. However, a whistleblower from the CDC recently said that's over 45,000 instead of 12,000. Dr. Stock has been on many shows and done interviews with Tucker Carlson, New York Magazine, OAN. The Indianapolis Star tried to discredit him without a shred of evidence, but as you can see, the two distinguished doctors above have not only validated what he said, but go even further. Regarding masks, even Dr. Fauci said masks don't work, and the former head of COVID for Biden recently said on television that masks don't work. I want to thank this board for being willing to listen and taking seriously the comments from the parents and from Dr. Stock at the last meeting and looking at the research. Matt Walsh, writer and author, recently appeared before his school board in Virginia, and he said more children die from the flu in one season than have died from COVID in the last 18 months. Why are we letting the media and the government scare us with this particular virus? It doesn't matter how much these doctors say, including Dr. Fauci, Dr. Stock, or the Indiana Department of Health, or anyone else values these data. It matters what the majority of residents and the parents in this school district, how they value the data, and whether they want to absorb a minor risk or not. Parents should have it controlled and not government. Two seconds.
Thank you, Janet. If we had a prize for sticking to that three minutes, you get it. Okay, next on our list is Sam Harper.
Hi. I don't have any. Before I address my concerns, I wanted to thank and encourage the board for your best efforts to keep our kids safe, for listing experts in our field, for taking guidance from actual board-certified physicians and specialists, and for understanding scientific consensus. We expect our kids to learn and understand scientific method. In my opinion, we have to be willing to live by that rather than relying on anecdotal emotional inter and evidence. However, after hearing all about this great technology we have for digital learning, I'm very concerned about what seems to be a lack of consistent and comprehensive remote learning plan for kids that are quarantined. My stepson today was sent home as a result of contact tracing in Fortville Elementary, eligible to return after eight days with a negative COVID test, even though we just had one last Friday, and then with masking for the remaining six. Initially, we received no information regarding the cost of quarantine. We were told that work would be provided to do at home, but no instructional support would be provided. There's been follow-up recently, in the last couple of hours, that now there will be some virtual meetings. But as anyone who has an elementary school child can attest, the one-on-one and class education is critical to their learning. Middle school, high school, providing a list of work is probably reasonable. But at the elementary school level, they need that guidance. I firmly believe that the teachers themselves are doing the absolute best they can, and I appreciate them for everything they do because this is just an untenable situation we find ourselves in. However, our students, especially in elementary school levels, need guidance. They need someone to walk them through it. If we have what sounds like almost an entire elementary school class being sent home, there's no reason that virtual school can't be done in lieu of physical school. That's really all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Number three on our list is Don Stock.
Dan Stock, must I state my address again?
Yes, please.
577-707-300.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for their attention today, and I'd also like to give an apology. You guys got a swipe from Tucker Carlson, I don't think he intended. I didn't have a chance to clarify that. I hope you all got my email, what I saw on the AICU's very good governance. And I think everybody here should appreciate that good governance. What I would point out to the board is the thing you do have control over is a contingency mask plan. That's the one thing you can do without any coercion from the state as part of misdemeanors. And I think that the opinions of Dan Stock, or the CDC, or the NIH, or for that matter, even your own opinions of that mask policy are actually unimportant. Everyone's had the chance to read the data now. The question is whether or not, and how it's valued. While at the last meeting here, you said that two-thirds of people did not want any masking done, and to the degree that that can be accomplished, I think that this board owes it to the people that it represents to serve them. And if they can't, then to resign, if they cannot in good conscience serve that. No one's asking if you do a misdemeanor, get yourself put in jail, or anything like that. But it does clearly that the majority of people in this school district do not want a mask policy that has any kind of things that puts masks back on people unless it is mandated by a governmental authority higher than yourselves. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Number four on our list is Clinton Valentine.
Hello.
Hi.
Clinton Valentine. My address is 3777 West State Road 234, and that's in McCordville. The only reason I'm speaking today is because today, 11 out of 27 students in my daughter's fifth-grade class were contract traced. That's almost half the class. I'm worried because that's half the class not getting an in-person education. The kids, they were told to gather things and wait for their parents and a room to pick them up. We're raising our children to think it's not important to attend school. Every year, I tried to have perfect attendance. It was a goal mine. Unfortunately, even the kids missed quite a bit of school. But we used to get the letters in the mail, and I weren't encouraged to keep them home. I think that allowing the children to miss school like this will cause them to think school's not important and possibly cause a higher percentage of kids to drop out of school. And I know that's not what anyone here wants. I apologize, I'm a little nervous. I'm not good at speaking in front of people. Probably should have done a better job with that when I was in school. You know, I think students now are more worried about who's going to be contact traced next than getting their education. And I think another thing that's a problem is the kids are fearing being contact traced, and they don't want to be social with their friends in an elementary school. I think it's very important. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, you did a great job. Number five on our list is Phil Coleman.
My name's Philip Coleman, 505, Los Angeles, right at Greenfield. I know last time I was here, I was talking guys about virtual education opportunities for kids who are in quarantine. Looks like that's being put in place. Thank you, thank you to the school, the teachers, to the staff, to everybody involved. He does it. It's not perfect. What is? But at least it's something to build on. You know, that's going to be in the period between throughout the year. My concern is the metrics. So I think we should be taking a more proactive approach to things rather than a reactive approach. When I look at the tier levels, I see things like at 12%, we start adding additional sanitizing procedures. As numbers of COVID-positive cases, we start adding these procedures. And I think to myself, why do we wait? And I assume it's a neither or. If we had a, say, a 12% absentee rate in a school or a certain number of COVID cases, I don't think we should wait until we hit a number. I think, you know, again, it's much better to be proactive rather than reactive. I realize that's more work for people, more money in sanitizing supplies, fogging. But to introduce, we have to do everything, everybody has to dig in and do the extra step. So that's kind of what I'm, I'd just like the board to reconsider those guidelines. Move those up, you know, take those orange standards, you know, move those to the blue tier, et cetera, with the exception of masks. Throw those out.
Thank you. Next on our list, and I'm going to be honest, I'm not sure. Is it Tamara? Oh, all right. So next on our list is Stephanie St. John.
Hi, my name is Stephanie St. John. I live at 1515 West 1050 North, Fortville, Indiana, 46040. I have five children, and four of them are in school. Two are at Fortville, one at the middle school, and I also have a freshman. I wanted to be on my A team today because, one, public speaking is not my jam, and two, because I feel like this is my job to advocate for my kiddos. However, I'm struggling. I'm struggling because I've watched our community tear each other apart, and now you're lumped into two categories, careless or sheep, vaccinated or unvaccinated. I moved here almost five years ago, and I adore the inclusive camaraderie of this small-town age. Three years ago, my son was in a near fatal car accident, and it was this very community that rallied behind a little boy and our family that many have not even met. I miss that. I bring this up only to remind you, those categories didn't exist three years ago. They didn't exist last year. They were all just parents. I devoted my adult life and believing in modern medicine. I've been a nurse for 17 years, and I just want to say this about the vaccine because this isn't a platform that I really care about. My vaccine does not make your vaccine work any better. There is no invisible barrier that protects you from being infected. If you fear COVID, please get the vaccine. If you fear COVID, please wear a mask. And if you fear COVID, please practice social distancing. But please remember that not everyone shares your fears. Okay, now that we have that, I wanted to touch on how contact tracing has affected our daily life. Last Monday, I received a Parents' Square notification informing me that my daughter was contact traced at high school. She had a good feeling it was going to happen. In fact, she thought it was going to happen on Friday, but she was... In fact, she thought it was going to happen on Friday, but she was never called down. At 3:55 on Monday, she texted me from the bus celebrating she made it through one more day, and she wasn't quarantined. I informed her, I got the notification on the app, but no one had called. She started stressing out because she didn't know. She wasn't prepared, and she stayed the rest of the day, along with writing the bus home. She emailed her teachers that night, and no one responded. By Wednesday, actually, in fact, still today, I still haven't been notified. Only parents were, so I called the office and asked about getting her books from her locker. When I told them I was never notified, they said give it 24 hours. I explained it had been 48, and had I not had my parents' score notifications on, she would probably still be in school. I told them that the lack of communication from some of the teachers, and they said wait 24 hours. I explained again, it had been 48. I know teachers are so overworked and so underpaid. I don't envy their job, and I will confidently say, I can't fathom what a day in their shoes would be like. But if tracing is our future, it might be time to add a few more positions to your staff. Possibly a liaison between your students and teachers that could be available for instructions and guidance to help navigate it all. I know you all are doing your very best to accommodate everyone. No matter what your decisions will be, you will surely anger 50% of our parents. Just as I don't envy your teachers, our teachers, I don't envy you. All I know is there has to be a better solution. It's obvious COVID isn't going anywhere. We have to learn to live with it, battle it, and not lose our children's best interest during the war.
Kim Johnson?
Guess I should have said on the other side here. Kim Johnson, 10664, over in Red Bull. I've got two kids here in the school system, high schooler and middle schooler, and a couple of things that I'm here about. One is the quarantining. I have a son right now that is home quarantined for contact tracing. And my big concern here is, if you are quarantined doing contact tracing on a bus or in a school, you can go back at 10 days. But if it's extracurricular, it's 14 days, regardless of any test or anything. So my son could sit with somebody on a bus and be contact traced, sit with them for 15 minutes, and be able to come back at 10 days. But if he's outside playing football, open air, no confirmation that he had been with him for 15 minutes, but because he was on the team, he could not come back for 14 days. Okay? That's from the norm. My other issue is, I work with and live in this, I work with At Risk Youth, Seventy Foundation. I work with them because we work on alternative options. What we do now, standard education, especially this year, alternatives are needed. It doesn't work for everybody. And we are not giving those options to our kids. You know, as everyone has stated, my child is home, not going to get direction. Right? I have three amazing teachers that have contacted me and said, here are your Google Meet's, you know, sign up for this class, this class, this class. We haven't heard from some of the other teachers. Others, we have one that has said, hey, your stuff that we posted, you can figure out. But alternative education, when you get to high school, it's essential. We have kids that are out there that are having to work now because their parents are not able to support the families. So those kids are happy to be out there and working. We have kids that can't come to school, and because the standard learning doesn't work for them, they've been contact traced too many, and they're behind, they're scared, they don't know what to do. So we have to look at these alternative options that are out there, and my concern is that we have been brought, it's come to the school district from Seventy Foundation, this alternative option. And Greco uses Seventy Foundation, and the Shelbyville now uses Seventy Foundation. It doesn't cost the school anything. It gives you resources, it gives you benefits, and these options are available, and yet they're not given to our students. Why are we not out there fighting for our students and giving them their options? And I know Dr. Parker is above, you know Seventy Foundation, I know that, but we need to give these options to our students. So, thank you, guys.
Lori Vaughn.
Hello, I'm Lori Vaughn, and my address is 5896 WEST 200 NORTH, INDIANA, FOUR-SIX-O-FOR-O. And I am here because I absolutely love this community, and I have invested time in students and in weekly prayer times with other moms praying for the students, and for the teachers, and for you all. Unfortunately, I'm here as a former parent, as my son was chosen for a leadership team, where he was presented with transgender issues and needing to accept that as a reality, and as they wanted to be called a day. And that was not okay with me, and also the increased pressure to fast speed. I do, I'm so thankful for you all, and I'm thankful for your role here, because you've been placed here for such a time as this. I thank you for the opportunity to voice, as this is important. What I'm hearing tonight a lot is the word "control." And so us being able to come before you and voice facts and opinions is critical these days, because voices are being censored heavily. And so I desire to get back to the true heart of education, which is to ask questions, to use critical thinking, to not just take someone's word for it, but looking at the facts and the data. I consider, I would ask that you consider looking at the VAERS website. If you have not looked at that yet, I would highly recommend it, as it has individual cases. It has every single vaccine injury listed, and you can go in and look at which vaccine was given, when it was given. Unfortunately, there are over 12,000 deaths listed, and of course, those are way, they're not all told, the story's not told. So we are losing our freedom to access ideas, such as if it's becoming the norm. And so I'm concluding this is not true education. Our country was founded on God, it was founded on life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It was fought for, it was blood for, and we must not blind, we must not make our way back to life. I know there's only so much you can do, but I ask that you do what you can do to allow for freedom in this place. I ask that you not discriminate based on vaccine status, that you leave choice in the hands of parents who also do their homework. I am asking that you stand for freedom. Our enemies are not one another. Our enemy is fear. Our enemy is divisive narrative, and our enemy is information control. I am asking that you stand for freedom and not give to fear.
Our final speaker is John Jessup.
I'm John Jessup, 111 Main Street, Shirley, Indiana. I don't have any kids in this school, but I'm president of the board commissioners. I'd like to thank you for your opportunity to speak. Heard a lot of really neat stuff about pathways of learning over here. And one thing that I picked up on that happens a lot is buzzwords. I heard that every one of the first four speakers say the word cohort. Every one of them multiple times said the word essential, and a hundred times we heard the word pathways. And I know you do, but I want to exhort you to notice that there is a large cohort here that feels like it's essential that we find a pathway past COVID-19, past the damage that we're dealing to our children. I also heard some of the teachers speak about, you know, teachers doing this for teachers. And I'm not going to go down the road of saying that, well, that is about the kids. I understand what she was trying to say. And she's right, the teachers are the experts in educating our children. You guys are the experts in running this school. These are the experts in raising our children. And we all pick our own experts. President, past president, past presidents before him, picked Dr. Anthony Fauci as the expert. You guys took a lot of heat and about three million page views over a gentleman that's here with us tonight that had other expert views. What I would say about the difference between those two men, and I don't know if I can speak for everybody, I think I know for myself, when Dr. Fauci stands up on TV and feeds us all these lines of bull that we've been hearing for 18 months, we get that feeling in our gut. It's a spiritual thing, you feel it in your gut. Some may be right, some may not, about what we're doing to our children, some may be right about what we're doing to our economy and to, it's everything, we know it is right. But if you're like me, whenever Dr. Stock spoke, and I'm not offending him, or saying this study's better than others, but I didn't have that feeling in my gut. The things he said, I went, hmm, that makes a lot of sense. That's a lot of the same things that I've been wondering and thinking about. On the guiding principles I've seen, I noticed that number one, guiding principle is to comply with state and federal guidelines. Unfortunately, I think number six, where you had number six was creating a healthy environment for our children to be educated. I think you got this flipped around.[1316.15][1316.15](APPLAUSE). Again, about experts, please give me one moment, it's worth it.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Local experts, again, the decisions that we make here, that the local experts that we choose here are going to have at least, a less painful impact on our children, because we love our children. We love this community. You love this community. You put out your time and your energy for this community, for these children. There's going to be mistakes made. It's better if we make the mistakes here with our local experts than relying on experts in Indianapolis and experts in Washington, DC.
My computer died, so I don't know what's next. Yes, sir. We can't do an engagement kind of thing. Afterwards, you're welcome to ask, if you'd like, if you have a question. Next on the agenda are the consent agenda items. And I don't know how to make this.
Double. Should we scroll?
We did for number five already.
Yep.
Yeah, we're ready for six. Consent agenda items, which include the regular session minutes from July 19th and August 6th, includes our claims, our personnel report, overnight field trip requests, request to accept donations, and our construction claims. So we can cover those all in one motion, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Tony. Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Item seven on our agenda, well, 7.1 is our health and safety plan. Chris, are you, you're not going to present the whole thing again, are you? No. Sorry.
This is in regards to the health and safety plan? Okay. Again, as I hinted earlier in my report to the board, we've had several new COVID cases already this year brought on by the Delta variant. Of over the 400 close contact cases that we've had quarantined so far this year, we've had three close contacts who've become COVID positive. Last year, after 304 COVID positive individuals, we had zero infection in close contacts. Due to this new experience brought on by the Delta variant, we have to do something different. Therefore, we're asking the board for your consideration and approval of the revised health and safety plan that was presented to you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the health and safety plan as presented this evening? It's item 7.1.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 7.1, health and safety plan.
Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
It's been moved by Tony, seconded by Chad. Is there any questions or discussion?
I would like to just say that when I tabled the motion at the last meeting, it was heavily weighed on the fact that I felt like we did lack in our academic response to our students. And I applaud this administration because they took that very seriously. And they still recognize that we continue to need to sharpen our pencils, and we need to do better at that. But I feel like we have a comprehensive plan in place, and so I appreciate the work that went into putting this together. The last thing we want is for any of our students to fall behind. We want them in school, we want them safe, we want them healthy. The last thing we want to do as the school board is close the school, and there are schools in southern Indiana that are closed right now. They started, and they've had a high rate of COVID. That's the last thing we want. The last thing I would want is for any of your children to have a senior year like my son had, where the week before we were to leave for senior spring break, we shut down. He had no senior prom, no spring track season, his senior year, and had a delayed graduation and a condensed graduation two months after the fact, before he was to leave for college. His college plans also got derailed due to COVID, and funds pulled because of COVID. And I don't like it any more than you do, but I think it's really important that we keep our kids in school. And I believe this administration is trying their best to do that. I think as a community, we have a real opportunity to shine as we leave here tonight. You don't have to agree with the person sitting next to you, you don't have to agree with any of us, but as a world, we're divided right now, and we had four million eyes on us last week. We have an opportunity to walk out of this boardroom tonight united. We don't have to agree, but we have to move forward. We have to show our children what that looks like, and I hope that this community can do that after tonight's decisions.
Any other comments or questions?
So one of the speakers did ask a question, and it comes to mind, the extracurriculars. Is that clear that there is differentiation on extracurriculars versus close contact from in-school and the 14 days out? Or is that miscommunication? Or is it, I just want clarification on that, if we have it.
I wrote that question down because it struck me as something I wasn't expecting, and it's been my understanding that athletes may compete, or excuse me, they may participate in athletics, they just have to be socially distanced. And I think for games and things of that nature, there's additional flexibility, but I'll look into that myself. But it's my understanding that they are able to participate, but that's on my list to double check tomorrow.
Okay, if there are no further comments or questions, all in favor of approving the updated health and safety plan, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Item 7.2 on our agenda is approval of updated teacher, appreciate, no? We just did that.
Well, I guess it is. It must be towards the end. Well, I guess it is. It must be towards the end. Yeah.
It's almost 7.3.
We just did that. We're ready for 7.2.
It's almost 7.3.
Yeah, I was thinking of 7.3. We changed the order at the last moment, so. You can go ahead and do that, and then we'll do 7.3 when you get there. I apologize.
Do you want to do 7.3 now?
If that's what you prefer.
That's fine, yeah.
It kind of stacks all the same stuff together.
So let's move to 7.3, which is the resolution regarding the 2021 health and safety plan. And Dr. Parker, you'll present that. Sorry, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. So last year during the pandemic, much of what was directed to schools was here's what you should do, and we had to figure out how to do it. That made sense, and we worked together with the board and administration and staff to navigate the rules that were provided to us. So most of those decisions were made at the administrative level. This year, with some of the work being directed by the state and then some of it at a local decision, we felt duty bound to bring our health and safety plan to the board for the board to make a decision as it was a local decision for that part. So we did that, and most schools do what I'm asking you to consider tonight. And that is for when there are tweaks and things in between board meetings and things of that nature that you authorize the school administration to make those tweaks and changes as necessary. Of course, we continue to communicate and share what those are and why we may need to do those with a broad group of stakeholders and leaders in our district. But I ask that you approve that so that we can take care of those tweaks as necessary in the ever-changing environment of the pandemic.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding the 2021 health and safety plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the safe and healthy, health and safety plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Chad. Are there any questions or discussion? I will say that I feel like, Dr. Parker, you and Chris and everybody have been very transparent about things you're thinking. You've shared a ton of information with us, so I feel confident that you'll keep us in the loop and communicate as you have been. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of that approval, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Back up to item 7.2, approval of the updated teacher appreciation grant policy. Now, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Each year, every school district across the state of Indiana is required to have their school or approve a teacher appreciation grant policy according to Indiana Code 20-23-10-3.5 sub-Id C, in order to receive grant dollars to distribute amongst their eligible teachers. The title of this is somewhat misleading because really the only update to this policy is the date. The policy itself has not changed. Those requirements include, as outlined in the policy, that in order to qualify for a, in order to qualify for tag grant dollars, a teacher must have worked here the previous year. They must have received either a highly effective or effective rating in their most recent performance evaluation. And they must still be employed here on December 1st of the current school year for that corporation, for the corporation that receives those tag dollars. The policy also states that teachers who are rated as highly effective will receive these titles at least 25% more than the stipend given to effective teachers. Here at Mount Vernon, it's always been 25% more for those highly effective teachers. And again, as the statute requires, the corporation must distribute these titles within 20 business days of receiving the tag grant distribution from the Indiana Department of Education, which usually occurs sometime in November or April. So again, tonight, I'm just asking for you to consider and approve the update to the policy, which again, is just the date.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve the updated teacher appreciation grant policy?
Move that we approve the updated teacher appreciation grant policy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Chad, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or discussions? All in favor of approving the teacher appreciation grant policy, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. We've already completed 7.3. We'll move to item 7.4, which is the Resolution 2021 Preliminary Bond Resolution. Mr. Elkins. Yes, I forgot. I have to do this. Yes, okay.
Okay, that's fine. If I could have someone, there you go, who got the presentation in front of us. We can go ahead and scroll down to the next slide if you would. So a little bit of background, I went back and looked, as many in the public know, and the board is well aware, we have shared project information, especially our future growth project information several times in the last year. I went back and looked, and we put out the possibility of the GO bond on December 12th in our first public event where we shared where we were at on our growth plan. So this is not a new idea, but we are revisiting it. And we'll have the board consider, or take it up with consideration officially at our next board meeting. So this is just the first steps in this process. Let me back up very quickly. GO stands for General Obligation Bond. If you'll think back to 2019, we issued a $2 million bond for technology, for the tennis courts, and for improving the lighting in several of our buildings, primarily the high school. So it is a short-term debt. The requirements to issue it are much, much less than what we went through with the stewardship project back over a year ago. So that's really just kind of the quick definition, but I know the board is familiar with this process. Up on the screen right now, we have our current debts, our current, the current debts. And so as you can see, going from left to right, obviously, we pay off debts. And so we have the capacity to add to that. And I am recommending, again, this is just the first step, but I'm recommending that we're considering to approve these first steps for issuing a 2021 GO bond. We have already sold the bonds for the 21 stewardship project, the 2021 stewardship project. Those will be on our official debt schedule and show up on the 2022 budget. And because, I want to refer to this here just again momentarily, because of the anticipated extraordinary growth in the net assessed valuation of our school district, we have the capacity to do this GO bond issue with no increase in the tax rate in our debt service fund, which I think is something that I would recommend taking advantage of. If we can scroll to the next slide, please, next slide, please. So if you look in bold for the pay year or the budget of 2022, our anticipated NSS valuation is expected to come in at 15% higher than the year before. I'm not going to go out on a limb and say that's going to happen every year, but I do think that we're going to be in double digits going forward, and that's going to afford us a lot of opportunities with no net tax increases to our constituents, which I know we're all very supportive of that idea. Next slide, please.
Hey, Greg. So this net assessed value is only on the properties that we're able to collect tax on. So anything in abatements or TIF districts are not.
Anything abated within TIF is outside of our assessed valuation that we have access.
I think so, yeah.
So, yeah, so Mr. May, so you're absolutely right. So there is another chunk of property value that is taxed, and those revenues are held within those TIF districts as those abated properties come on, usually over a 10-year period incrementally, a certain percentage, usually 10%, but 10% a year over 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So here we see, this is another feature of this GO bond that is the reason I'm recommending that we go this route, is that because of the revenue that we can generate at no tax rate, we can't pay this bond back in one year. And I think that's something that we need to take advantage of while we have the capacity. The future growth plan, which the board has approved, and we are past all of the requirements for that. If you'll recall, we're financing that with those short-term temporary debts called bond anticipation notes. So those repayments won't come on until the earliest 2023. So while we have this space in our debt, let's take, again, my recommendation is we take advantage of that with a GO bond that we would pay back over the course of just one year.
So can I ask, what's the typical time that we take to pay a bond?
The current one we have is payback over seven years, $2 million. A lot of schools will have rolling two-year GO bonds, so a two-year cycle. This is a little bit unusual, certainly not unheard of. But again, we have the capacity to do it and then get that space back for when that bigger growth plan comes on to, comes on to our debt schedule. And before we get any further, I just want to add, this is intended, we'll talk about this in the resolution that I'm going to ask the board to consider, but the whole purpose behind this, next slide, please, the whole purpose behind this is kind of a continuation of our stewardship mindset. We set out a year ago to tackle not only critical space needs in the middle of school, but also roofing and mechanical systems and HPA systems with some technology upgrades. For those buildings that weren't necessarily a part of that project, this bond will allow us to go back in and touch those buildings in those same areas to make sure that all of our facilities are getting addressed while we have the capability and capacity to do that. So for now, it's kind of like the budget season, we always advertise high. In the resolutions for consideration tonight, I would ask that we get approval for a $3 million bond. The reality is, it's probably going to come back in in about two and a half after we factor in all of the other items within the debt fund. But we always want to advertise high, and then we'll see what the assessed valuation is, and we'll dial all of those numbers in at a later time. But a $2.5 million bond, in reality, if we sold that, you know, we could have about $2.3, $2.4 million available for those projects that I mentioned. So just a quick summary, for next year's debt fund, if we take this bond, if we issue this debt, we pay all of our bills, which is always our number one priority. We are still collecting two-thirds of the increment, so we can finance that, and that's huge to our operations fund. We start to pay back the stewardship project bonds. We're able to, because of this increased capacity, we're able to pay our bus loan back in one year, next year. We're almost on schedule where we're just tapping one bus financing per year now. I'm really excited about that. And I know that's super in the weeds, but that's a big deal for me. We're still able to finance the waiver that we spent a lot of time last year talking about, where it's that debt service transfer to operations that we're putting in our savings for when the increment goes away. Again, the GO bond's paid back in one year. We create space for the future growth plan payments, and we have no rate increase in debt service if we do this. So that is the summary of kind of the terms and conditions of the GO bond that I am proposing to. Any comments or questions before we look at the related resolutions? Okay, so at this time, then, I would ask the board for your consideration and approval of Resolution 2021-22, the Preliminary Bond Resolution. This resolution establishes the maximum amount to be borrowed, the maximum term of repayment, and maximum interest rate. Should the board vote to approve tonight, notice of this determination to issue the bond should be published twice, one week apart, in the Greenfield Daily Reporter. Also, the notice of determination will be posted in three public places within the school corporation. And I'll add, you are not actually, this is not final approval, this is first steps. Anytime we issue debt, we have to create a time for public hearings. This is first steps. So I'd ask for your consideration and approval of Resolution 22.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-22, approval of the preliminary bond resolution?
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-22.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Chad, seconded by Tony. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask the board for consideration and approval of Resolution 2021-23, the Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures. If the school corporation pays any preliminary costs related to this project in advance of receiving the bond proceeds, it may want to reserve its ability to be reimbursed from the bond proceeds after the closing. The Internal Revenue Service requires that a school corporation declare its official intent to reimburse as documented in this resolution in order to reserve this ability to reimburse.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-23, the Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-23.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Chad. Any questions or discussion?
So what this allows us to do is go ahead and start some of the work ahead of time, the issuing of the bonds. And then once the bonds are issued, then we can transfer money from just, okay, all right.
Any other comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome. Item 7.6, Health Science Welding Fees. Mr. Shipley.
Thank you. I'm asking you to approve Health Science 1 and Health Science 2 fees along with the welding fees. This is not a new approval request. It's a transfer request. These courses, well, Health Science 1 was taught here at Mount Vernon High School last year, but the fees were charged to Anderson Career Center, and Health Science 2 and welding were at Anderson Career Center. So we're just transferring the billing from Anderson Career Center to Mount Vernon High School to allow us to charge the students for these fees in order to take these courses. We're very lucky that we've been able to bring these home, if you will. And because we brought them in-house here in the building, we have had an increase in enrollment and a number of students that are very excited about these options. So we're very pleased with this. So this is not new. This is not a new fee for parents. It's as new as who's billing them. They made, Anderson and Mount Vernon, we made this decision this summer after you already approved our fees. So let's reach on to asking for this request. Do you have any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve the Health and Science welding fees as presented by Mr. Shipley?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Health and Science welding fees.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Tony, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or discussion?
So are these fees the same as what they were prior? It's just, so there's no increase or decrease in fees?
I'm going to say they're very similar to what they were when they were at Anderson. I don't know if they were exactly the same because some of the certifications and whatnot, but it was the same comparable price that they paid at Anderson.
Okay, thanks.
I want to add too, that this is, this falls into that category that someone mentioned earlier, one of our speakers, alternative education. This is one of those things we're doing to kind of address those issues along with our CNA and our flight. I don't know what that one's called, but. The aviation, yes, those are the.
We're very happy to bring this into the building. I just saw, you know, the CNA girls the other day in the hallway, you can see them, they're all dressed up. And I could tell right away that that's who they were. So it's good to have them in the building doing this work, so thank you for considering this request.
Right. All right. If there's no further questions, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Item 7.7 is Resolution Electing to Join the Public Employees Retirement Fund as Administered by the Indiana Public Retirement System. Mr. Smedley.
Okay, last time I promised this.
You've reached your limit.
Okay, so last fall, if you recall, we created a new classified position to oversee those school athletics as well as our facility rentals. Because this position is not currently, was not currently part of our classified positions that we offer, we are required by inverse to pass the resolution to allow this position to be added to the Public Employees Retirement Fund, known as PERF. So by approving this resolution, we'll be. So by approving this resolution, we'll be able to provide retirement benefits to our medical school athletic director and facility coordinator and be able to backdate those benefits all the way back to his date of hiring. So again, tonight, I'm seeking your consideration and approval of passing this resolution.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve joining the Public Employees Retirement Fund?
I move that we approve, sorry, it's a mouthful, joining the Public Employee Retirement Fund.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Chad, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. By the way, that's not my title. That's INR's title.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, item eight is our public hearing on the 2022 Bus Replacement Plan. Mr. Elkins. Wait a minute, don't talk yet.
I can handle that.
Okay, go ahead.
At this time, we're opening our first public hearing, or actually, yeah, it is our first public hearing this evening. I lost count, sorry. Notice of this public hearing for the 2022 Bus Replacement Plan was posted as legally required on August 5th, 2021, at 3:17 PM to the Department of Local Government Finance Gateway Website and to the school corporation's website. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-40-18, following the public hearing, the officers of Mount Vernon Community School Corporation may adopt the proposed plan as presented. And this year's plan, Board, is that we will be trading in five of the oldest buses in our fleets, purchasing six new buses. The bus quotes and specs will be considered for approval by the board following closing of tonight's public hearings. Corporation is required to list bus inventory for a rolling period of five years in each annual report. If the proposed bus replacement, replacement plan is adopted by resolution, that resolution will be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance as per Indiana Code 20-40-18-9 subsection D.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak regarding the 2022 Bus Replacement Plan? It would be the same rules as for speaking earlier. Seeing that there's no one here to speak, the hearing is now closed.
Well, now, for the second public hearing of the evening, notice of this public hearing for the 2022 to 2024 Capital Projects Plan was posted as legally required on August 3rd of 2021 at 8:51 AM to the Department of Local Government Finance Gateway Website and to the school corporation's website. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-40-18-6, following this public hearing, the officers of Mount Vernon Community School Corporation may adopt the proposed plan as presented. Corporation is legally required to list any projects or capital assets, asset purchases, which might, and that is the key word, might be paid for from the operations fund for budget year 2022, if the anticipated amount is $10,000 or more. The plan does not oblige us to expend those funds, and the plan can be amended as needed with board approval. If the proposed capital projects plan is adopted tonight, the resolution will be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance as per Indiana Code 20-14-18-6 subsection D.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak regarding the 2022, 2022, 2024 Capital Projects Plan? It would be the same rules as before. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Next on the agenda are action items 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3.
So I would ask the board for a motion to consider and approve Resolution 2021-24, which is Approval of the 2022 Bus Replacement Plan.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-24, Approval of the 2022 Bus Replacement Plan?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-24 for the bus replacement plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Tony, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the plan, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero.
We now ask the board for a motion to consider and approve the 2022 bus purchase bids as presented in the pack tonight.
Is there a motion to approve the bus bids as presented?
I make a motion to approve the bus purchase bids as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Tony. Any comments or questions from the board?
So you said we're retiring five buses. Are those all five, I guess, full-size school buses? Because I know this is four and two.
Yeah, the transit, the AD transit, AD passenger transit buses that are the most oldest, most oldest, the oldest or have the most mileage or hours on them. The six buses is, that's a permission to, we'll obviously assess everything at the time. But that's specifically what allows to get an additional special needs bus to have the lift because that enrollment is growing and that height, or the number of routes and movement during the day that we have to provide that service for. Having another bus would definitely alleviate that.
Thanks.
All right.
Let me add one or two. This is not the financing. This is just locking in the price of the bus so that we can get the financing. And you'll approve that at a later point.
Right, right. All right. All in favor of approving the 2022 bus bids as presented, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, finally, I'd ask the board for a motion to consider and approve Resolution 2021-25, which is Approval of the 2022 to 24 Capital Projects Plan.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-25, Approval of the 2022-24 Capital Projects Plan?
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-25.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Then moved by Chad, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
All right. Item 11 on the agenda would be announcements. Dr. Parker?
Yes, thank you so much. First to share is, last week, there was a county RDC meeting that was canceled due to lack of quorum. But the one before that, I'm not sure I shared yet. The county RDC did work to provide $500,000 in their budget to take care of helping support the, basically redoing the traffic at Mount Comfort Elementary School. It's going to take a lot of time and money to fix that and to increase our parent queue. And I know Alyssa Lockwood's looking forward to having that in her rearview mirror, no pun intended. But we're very grateful for that, and if Commissioner Jessup was here, he'd probably be able to confirm that they did move that forward into the budget. While we will not see those dollars right away, that is a pretty darn good promise, and we're appreciative of that. Last week also was the very first meeting of the Hancock County Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. I serve on that committee at the agreement of the four county superintendents, so the county schools got one seat on that committee. And I'm very excited to serve all of the schools in Hancock County as we go through an 18-month process to develop a new comprehensive plan. And also, Maria's going to be mad at me because I didn't tell her, but that committee elected me as one of the co-chairs along with Mary Gibble from the Community Foundation. So I'm really excited about that work and believe that it's the right thing for a county to get that done so that we can plan intentionally with all the growth that we're experiencing. And then finally, we do have a Hancock County Economic Development Council meeting this week that I'm looking forward to attending as well.
Awesome. That sounds like some great stuff happening there. All right. Item 12 on our agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at 8:02 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Tony. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of adjourning, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Thank you to everybody for coming. We appreciate it.